Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, June 9th, Gregory-Hartsville City Council Meeting. If you would please rise and have Councilwoman Wilson lead us into the invocation of the pledge.
Good morning, Father. Good day. You've allowed us to come into this hall with more time in the Senate to do the business of the city of Hartsville. We ask that you look over us while we do it and bless each and every person that's in this building tonight. Help us to do the things that are well in your sight, not your main sight, but your sight for these people in our city of Hartsville. We give you all honor and all praise. This blessing has in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please proceed. Is there a motion to raise the reading and approve minutes of the Tuesday, May 25th, Gregory-Hartsville City Council meeting?
So moved.
Then, motion made and seconded in discussion. All those in favor, please, to City 5 will say aye. And the minutes are approved. Presentations.
Good times.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My purpose, I was really to do a formal invitation. But I'll give you a little background. First of all, my name is Darby Hines. I reside at Route 566, Wyman Bridge Drive in the city of Hartsville. I'm seventy-one years of age. The rally that we're doing is going to be June 13th, which is going to be located inside the park. I do have a senior center, which is located at 705 Upper Street, which was established in 2011, but we are still, became a non-profit organization in March of 2013. Our main function is to stand in the gap of the seniors regarding, help them in numerous, based on what their needs are. I'll give you examples such as Medicaid, Medicare, social services, SSI, housing, medicine, doctors, transportation, that's just some of the flights that we do. The reason that we're having this, normally do have a cancer awareness in October, but I felt that we need to do something prior to that because in our church, we do have a number of people who do currently are fighting the battle of cancer. I'm a two-time survivor with the God blessing. I beat it in 2007. I beat it in 2009 or 2015. I'm still here. I'm hoping, I know a lot of time is scheduled, doesn't allow, and it is from ten to two. And like I said, if you could just come, just help, let people know that you as city members, that you are concerned with the fight and that you're there for their support. That's my main function. Now I turn my back to you. This also extends the invitation to everyone here in the audience. Come out, see what we got to offer, not just seniors. We don't turn away basically anybody. We try to really basically stay in the gap a lot of people because a lot of people don't have a sturdy foundation, such as socialism, family. We rely on a lot based on word and mouth by us operating on. So I thank you for that flight. My turn back around again. I thank you again for letting me come, spend your time. I thank you for the invitation, but please, I understand, if you'd just come for a few moments, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hines. I inadvertently missed the first item on the agenda, which is introduction to new hires and promotions. I apologize.
James?
Yes, ma'am.
I have your new employees.
I have two new employees and two promotions. Would you folks come forward, please? We have two new hires in streets and grounds. This is John Stokes, Charlie Harris, both of them arts building students in Hartsville High School, and we've got two promotions. John McCos, he was in environmental services, is now in the utilities department as a heavy equipment operator. And then, if you all remember, or maybe you done a couple of weeks, few weeks back, we had some issues and we had a turnover in the leadership of environmental services. Lori Horton was the admin person down there. And she stepped up, I mean stepped up big time, and has done a phenomenal job, got a bunch of new ideas, and I told her we can try anything you want to try, you know? So, as a reward for that, we have promoted her to manager of environmental services.
Glad to have you all. Congratulations. Good luck. Okay, next item on the agenda is Parks Committee Annual Update. Mr. Andrews.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. I have the pleasure of doing this each year. Thank you so much for continuing to allow me to work with parks. Our committee people are David McFarland, Bart Stedman, Rose Williams, and Tiffany Wilson. You have a fairly complete report in your notes. I'd still like to speak about a few things. I know we have been concerned in Berry Park about the condition of the memorial. And the good news is that we're working with Bobby Goodson, and he's working with a local contractor. What they're going to do during the month of June is look at different materials that might work, and take one panel, pick out one panel, and kind of use it as a test. In July, by the end of July, whatever repair they think will probably work should be completed. And so, at that point, we can decide whether that repair has worked or if we have to go someplace else. I know James Clemmons has done a lot of work researching other options from out of town, but I think this is what we'll go ahead and try initially. And Byerly Park, the splash pad is in its third season, and those of us who doubted that the splash pad was going to be an asset to our community have been rewarded by the fact that it is well-used, used by people here and used elsewhere. A whole bunch of groups, I think eighteen to twenty groups, used it before school was out this year. So, our own children had an opportunity to enjoy that. Also at Byerly Park, exciting this summer due to the recruitment efforts of Phil Gardner, the Dixie Ponytails will be here in July, so we'll have another tournament, folks all over the community from other states, who will be spending money there. One of the most heartrending things since last year's report, certainly I think right around the time of last year's report, was the opening of Garrison's Place, the handicapable playground in Byerly Park. It's had some ups and downs getting going, but it is, it's working, and we've made some adjustments that have made it a great place for those kids who need it, as well as their siblings to play together. At Lawton Park, Beth Tripp has worked with just absolutely robust rental activity. I live near there, there's a wedding there almost every weekend. It's a great venue for residents, it's in good shape, and it's also kind of a good source of income for the building maintenance, paying pretty much for itself. The new playground equipment is coming, it's, I mean, it's there and going up, and just what's there so far, it is not your grandmother's playground. It is very different, it looks like it's state-of-the-art, and I'm very excited. I think that was about a three-week work time for it to be put in, so I guess probably another two and a half weeks. And it will include handicapable equipment. In Pride Park, on the Sundays, a basketball in the park, and it's in full swing right now, under event coordinator Barbara Carolway, scheduled for this Sunday. If you haven't been to Gospel in the Park yet, give it a try on a Sunday afternoon. It is, it's wonderful. And we will also be getting handicap swings in Pride Park through a grant from the Byerly Foundation. In conclusion, thank you to the maintenance staff, all the park users for the excellent condition of the park. People are respecting the parks, and the city does a great job keeping them up. In 2012, we set three priorities. We've got two down and one to go. Splash pad, that's worked out pretty well. Pride Park renovation, oh my. Replacement of Lawton Park tennis courts, I hope we can get to that at some point. It's expensive, it's not used as much as the other ones, but I think it's a reasonable investment in that park, which is otherwise beautiful except for the tennis court area. But, looking at the tennis courts and everything else, I think this, we may be at a point where we may have to have some kind of a planning process, or a simple planning process, I mean, we don't have to hire a million-dollar consultant, but if we could get staff and interested citizens together and talk a little bit about what individuals think we ought to have in our parks and set some new priorities, I think that's something that would be good for us to do.
Would that be in all parks? Would that be in all parks or just Long Park?
No, 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 that would be for all of the parks. Yeah, for the parks in general.
I'd like to see that happen.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Teresa, that's a good question.
Hey, any other questions? Appreciate your passion and all the work you and your committee have done. The splash pad is wide open, you know, grandkids go there all the time, which is good, and of course, they're very excited about the new playground equipment at Long Park.
This stuff is wonderful. A lot of this stuff has been staff-driven, so the city manager should be proud of her crew.
At Bearden Park, I have a gentleman come in from Ohio, a few weeks back, and he stayed at the hotel over here in Waltham, but he did not know it was there, just was amazed, very complimentary on what he was doing there. So, you never know the effect it's going to have on our parks and the reputation. Thank you.
There's one other question. On the restroom at Pride Park, what is it going to take to bring Pride Park restroom up to the standard of the other parks' restrooms?
I think it's above the standard of any park restroom, other park restroom that we have. It's a more modern, more advanced technology.
God bless.
I mean, the only other one with a bathroom is Lawton Park, and it doesn't have that advanced technology.
Lawton Park has a building that has restroom in it that's available, right?
I'm sorry.
Lawton Park has a building that has restroom.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right. So, that's my concern.
Not to the public.
So, you're talking about the number?
Yeah, rent the building, you can't just visit the park and go.
In respect, that would, we have second reading of the budget of the next week, that would be a budget amendment if you wanted to make that. We have estimates on a new restroom for Pride Park. If you want to add, out and remove, I think it was around thirty, something like a thousand dollars, Mary Catherine.
It was, we're staying. It was low because you'd have to renovate the entire structure in order to run infrastructure, sewer and water infrastructure. So, you would have to basically, you'd have to take that whole structure up, which involved craning, it's going to be way more than thirty thousand.
Mary C. James, can you speak to that? Did you know?
Mary Catherine, you talk so lightly, I can't hardly hear you. I guess you must be getting old, but, no, we were, as we discussed, the restroom that's at Pride Park actually stays in service a lot better than the one in Lawton Park, which is constantly being vandalized. But if you're going to put a new one in, whatever the cost of that is, you obviously have to run water and sewer to it. If it's going in the same location as the current one, to take that one out, if you ever saw how it was delivered, it was delivered on flat beds and very heavy cranes, it is solid concrete, it's no easy job, it's got to be excavated around it with a backhoe, which is what we had there in the first place. So, price-wise, you know, you, I don't know, you have to add five, ten thousand dollars to whatever price we get from the design of a new bathroom.
But that would be a council decision as far as budgeting. That's what it would take.
Because I have some concern about that, because I was told that there was a bathroom there with like two commode seats like?
Yeah.
At Pride Park. I don't know, I went to look, and when I went to look, I saw what's there now. I didn't see what was there prior to that.
There wasn't anything prior to it. We had four platters. There was no restroom facility at Pride Park until about three years ago.
Anything else? Okay, moving on to item five, the update.
Just on your calendar, the joint meeting, county, school district, cities, has been canceled for the 29th. You can mark that off the calendar. As Nancy stated, the installation of the playground equipment is well underway at Lawton Park. Please drive by, it's going to be really nice in there. Also, I would love for you guys to drive by and look at the tennis courts, they're in rough shape. We had another complaint today from a citizen about the condition of the courts, so if it's not in your budget this year, I don't feel like we have enough room in the budget at this point to put that in there, but in future years, that's going to need to be addressed. The fence at Butler, that was a project of the city, and also Sonoco Foundation completed that fence. That work is complete at this point. And as you can tell, there's a lot of work going on downtown. The alleyway is torn out behind us, and once that's complete, they will start the parking lot, and then finally College Avenue will be started after that. The consultants will be in town on Thursday to give me an update of the timeline, so I can provide that to council next Tuesday. And Mary Catherine has an update on South Hartsville Neighborhood Association.
Okay.
Sure. So, there is a training meeting happening soon.
Could you come forward, please?
Just have two.
Okay.
So, Teresa, you fill in the gaps. You were there the last meeting, I missed it, but the two key takeaways that I think you all should know about are, there's a training coming up for residents of South Hartsville that's in conjunction with planning staff. They've developed a survey so that they can go through the neighborhood and grade all the houses, all the structures, and then compile this data and prioritize critical areas so that we are most wisely allocating our limited resources, concentrating all of our partnerships with Habitat for Humanity and Air Neighborhood Revitalization Program, and any grant money that we may receive in the areas that need it most, so that there's concentrated effort and we're not just picking, you know, random blocks from across the neighborhood. And this is what was advised in the Community Planning Assistance, yes, Neighborhood Revitalization Program. And then, we're very excited about an application that we put in to Byerly Foundation, a low-income entrepreneur revolving loan fund. So, it is not limited to just South Hartsville residents, it will be limited by, you know, income, but we will certainly be partnering with the South Hartsville Neighborhood Association and hosting the educational curriculum component that is attached to that in, at Butler High School and their community center.
That'd be like developing a business plan.
Correct. So, think kind of the same concept of the startup Hartsville, but this is before any applicant actually submit their application, they will have to go through an educational series. So, we'll be partnering with the Sioux Energy Center for Innovation, Main Street, and other key stakeholders to develop this curriculum. And we're very excited because we've got the expertise of community, there's a, I think it's Community Works out of Eagle, South Carolina, and this is what they do. And they're, our timing is perfect, we approached them, and they are, this is just the time that they're looking to expand throughout South Carolina. So, they have a proven track record, they've got the administration that knows how to underwrite these sorts of loans, and they have committed to partner with us, and for a very miniscule fee, they'll do the administering of all that paperwork. And then, we on the front end, City's app will be committed to being that liaison and walking interested applicants through the process and helping mobilize the program.
Where's the cotton, Mr.?
Yeah.
Who's this?
It is completely contingent upon funding. So, if the Byerly Foundation funds us, we'll start as soon as they award those monies. And I think that announcement is made in early fall.
Does training, you won't be able to have a follow-up?
Yes, ma'am. We can't do anything unless we get funded.
How they coming along with the grant?
Which grant?
For the South Hartsville. I'm sorry, I was announcing because of the black.
Okay.
And I didn't make the meetings, and I'm not to be informed on that part of it.
Sure. You're probably talking about Lincoln Village, community development.
No, I'm talking about the South Hartsville period. We also, I'm not even worried right now because I think, I think Village is in the process of being drawn.
Right.
But from all of the other parts of development in the community, and the grant that you would write wouldn't be just Lincoln Village, I don't think.
No, that would be one of the big-ticket elements of that. So, we have the Department of Commerce come in and gave them a tour of all of South Hartsville. They reviewed the entire neighborhood revitalization plan from CPAT, and their recommendation of all of the eligible and likely fundable activities was that we concentrate on Lincoln Village, acquire and demolish Lincoln Village, and then work in the areas adjacent to that because it has to be, as you know, a tight geographic footprint. So, we will concentrate CDPG dollars in that area, and demolition would run about three hundred thousand, and that would leave us two hundred thousand if we're funded, the maximum five hundred thousand, two hundred thousand to do what we did in Oakdale, if that is a priority of the neighborhood. All those needs are identified in the plan and eligible activities. Those were security cameras, streetlights, sidewalks, as needed in those adjacent streets.
What I'm looking at, what you're saying to me, that you're just talking about the Lincoln Village area there, what about from Washington Street South and all of the northern boroughs, only that part of the community?
Right. And that's going to, part of what that, the survey will do is help identify like the next priority area, because it's a huge area, and there is no way that we can get funding to fix every, it's too large of an area to touch entirely by CDPG funds. So, we have to be wise and prioritize.
I would hope if you're going to prioritize that in some points, if you're going to do this part of the city, that you come back and try to get another CDPG grant to go forward.
Yes, sir. We're eligible for up to two phases, but we can only have one open project at a time. And this is what Commerce recommended, was that we start with Lincoln Village, and since they're the ones funding, I figured it would probably be best to start where they said would be most impactful.
Well, I don't have a problem with that. I have a problem with just when you say Lincoln Village, because Lincoln Village has been sitting over there so long. But do you have other parts of the city? And if you're going to go back and write that grant for CDPG to go further south, then I can, I can deal with that.
Definitely. And again, that's the point of that, the survey, and having the neighborhood residents conduct it so that they're, they mobilize and go out, and they themselves are ranking houses to, so that we have it started to look and see, okay, this is really the section of streets that needs the most help, so this should be our next phase. That's the point of the survey.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mary Catherine.
Yes, ma'am.
Approximately, if we get the funding for Lincoln Village, that was the recommendation of the place for us to start, approximately, how long would it take for us to go to the next grant?
Once that first grant is closed out, then we could apply for the next.
Yeah, and I'm asking you, approximately, how long do you think that would be?
I would say, let's be on the state side and say three years, at the worst. I'll say worst-case scenario. But look at Oakdale, and granted, there were lots of obstacles and staff turnover and all that, so hopefully we would have consistent staff presence throughout, so it would be a much easier process, but worst case, three years.
Yes, if, I'm actually concerned about that, in that with the Lincoln Village project, we didn't quite understand that Lincoln Village was going to be first, and then, like Mr. Bernis said, everything else south of there is going to have to wait, and you say worst-case scenario, three years.
Right. Well, there are so many other things, that's why we certainly don't want to thank all progress in South Hartsville on one grant program, because there are so many other resources that we can utilize to address this whole list of issues, one of them being, if you're looking particularly at like facade improvements or home repairs, that you've got the Habitat for Humanity Neighborhood Revitalization Program that does exactly that, and without all of the strings attached to Commerce funds, without the extensive timeline, all of that. So, I think that, it depends on what exactly your concern is, if you're talking about pedestrian infrastructure lighting, but there are other things that we'll be doing in the meantime. And we've actually already started working towards, so there are so many hoops to jump through to do this CDPG project, but one of the big ones is that we have to do an environmental review of the affected area, being Lincoln Village, so we've already gotten permission to go ahead and do that, and we're working with the COG to complete that, so that if when, hopefully we're funded, we'll have that, and that takes six months, so we'll be kind of like six months ahead of the game. So, hopefully that will hold.
For future reference, we will, we will know better the next time to not maybe get in that situation.
What situation?
With the Lincoln Village situation.
What do you?
With the turnover of the different owners. How many, do we know how many owners we've had?
I don't think we could really control, I mean, it's not a city-owned property, so we can't help that the apartment kept selling from, you know, we can't tell somebody not to sell their property.
And I think the big picture of this is, you know, we're trying to utilize every available grant source there is, and don't tie all the hoops to one thing. And I think doing the survey, getting the data, you've got to have that input and ask for that before the grant runs, you know, every one of the homeowners, that is just, doesn't always go as quick as we like, and it's the base of reality.
What would happen to a lot of the lots at the eminence, and it goes up like, we've got old blocks, I think it's the Campus Street. There's only two houses that live in on Campus Street, because it's too heavy. And we're coming back to one, it's pretty weak, we have at least four lots, two, two houses buried in there. James.
Ms. Graham, we'll talk about that, and I can give with the code enforcement officer, so we can address those specific lots that you're talking about.
We need to do that for both houses.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mary Catherine? Thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda, the consent agenda, and we will go without objection on that. Under unfinished business, item six, the city manager will publish this call, please.
Sure. Public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4200, ordinance to amend Hartsville City Code in its A, zoning chapter seven, sign advertising devices, section seven, signs permitted in Central Business District, P1, subsection I.
Okay, I'm glad the public hearing is open. An ordinance 4200, if you'd like to speak to this ordinance, please come forward, state your names, address, with the broker, and limit your comments to two minutes. Speaking, everyone, our public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? To pass ordinance 4200?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'm coming to pass the ordinance 4200.
Okay, motion seconded, in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance, please, aye. None, but aye aye aye. I have opposed, there is no opposition, ordinance 4200 passes. Under new business, item number seven, have a man.
Sure. First reading ordinance, I went to Taylor's, so I have to admit, I have no voice. 4201, an ordinance to amend Hartsville City Code, chapter 31, environment, article one, smoking in public places of employment, section 31, dot two, definitions. And this is actually a request of the Mayor Protem. We passed an ordinance not allowing cigarette smoking in restaurants bars, other places of employment. This is to add electronic smoking device, nothing else is changing the ordinance, we're just adding the e-cigarettes vaping to the ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a motion to pass ordinance 4201?
So moved.
And servant? Okay, ordinance pending, motion seconded, in discussion on this. Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance 4201, please see the aye aye, aye aye, all those opposed, and there is one, one opposition, okay? First reading of ordinance 4201 passes. Item number eight.
It's first reading of ordinance 4202, an ordinance to adopt and approve the schedule for the city's splash pad, Harrettsville. The city is proposing
The city is proposing keeping the same rates as last year. Just last year when we adopted the ordinance, we actually said the fee schedule for twenty-fourteen. So that won't necessarily apply for this year. This is made in a word to an end. We will not come back to council unless we want to change the fees for the slash pad.
Okay, from this point forward.
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion for ordinance forty-two oh two?
Should move. Second.
Okay, motion in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance forty-two oh two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There is no opposition. First reading of forty-two oh two is approved. Item nine.
It's first reading of ordinance forty-two oh three, an ordinance amending the twenty-fourteen to twenty-fifteen fiscal year infrastructure fund budget.
Do we have a motion for ordinance forty-two oh three?
Should move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance forty-two oh three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There is no opposition. First reading of forty-two oh three passes. Item number ten, have a manager.
Resolution oh six, section one five, dash zero one. A resolution pursuant to section four dash one dash one seventy C, Code of laws, South Carolina nineteen-seventy-six, as amended, consenting to the placement of certain property within the corporate limits of the city of Hart School in a joint county industrial and business park, Marlboro and Darlington Counties, and ratifying infrastructure finance agreement.
Okay, is there a, excuse me, is there a motion to pass resolution oh six fifteen oh one?
Should move.
Okay, in motion second, is there any discussion? Okay, Mr. Buckley, if you'd like to come up.
First of all, thank you all and Natalie Interstech for working with us and our attorney Will Johnson for partnering with Sunoco and in the county and state in bringing our newest facility to Hartsville and the what they're calling the IPS Innovative Packaging Studio. Many of you may have seen construction that started down where the old, what we call the Packaging Development Center. The goal is to make a state-of-the-art facility whereby we can bring our customers in, present and different packaging ideas to them. If I got to brochure that Roger Schromm's group passed out, if you're interested in what what our goal is, is what their goal is to bring in customers from around the country, around the world to present new packaging ideas can, it should, should bring great exposure to Hartsville and Darlington County to many of the top, of the top companies or customers from around the around the country. We, the inscriptions package that has been put together will allow, has helped allow Sunoco to to bring this here. And that's part of the, the reason we're here tonight is for approval of the multi-county park. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but as much as anything, I want to say thank you for willing to partner with us.
There was quite a bit of information in the packet. If you have an opportunity to go through that, it is kind of split between the city and the county. So it's a cooperative effort here. But it's, I think, bringing, what was it, twenty-something new jobs or how many new jobs?
We've committed to to ten new jobs, but the other side is significantly above that.
Okay. All right, any questions of, uh, Mr. Buck?
Hold on, we'll repeat for those jobs to be available.
Those jobs, something have been filled already and so then we'll continue to fill those as the, to fill the rest of them as the facility becomes available, which will happen sometime between now and the vote.
Do you have a hand?
Ma'am, I don't know. I mean, people have just trickled in as they, as the positions have become available. I would say we're probably halfway there.
Any other question?
What type of positions are you filling?
Primarily executive level positions, research scientists, management. You know, it's the, the goal of the Packaging Development Center is to bring research and development into the area. So it will be people with engineering degrees, people who manage those engineers, and some production workers.
Some, when you say some, do you have an idea about me?
I believe the split was six management and scientific type level people and three or four, you know, machine operators.
And these jobs are being advertised down local, paper.
Yeah, that would be a question for our HR group. But I would presume they will go through, they will probably go through our normal channels for for advertising.
That's what I was leading to. These are going to be very high-skill labor jobs.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Work that won't be just like a high school graduate. They would have to be technical college and so many years' experience or a four-year college degree and so many years' experience like that.
Large portion of that is correct for almost all of the jobs, yes.
Okay. All right, we've had a, thank you very much for coming. We have a motion in the second. All those in favor of resolution oh six fifteen oh one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There is no opposition. Resolution oh six fifteen oh one, thank you very much. Item number eleven, have a manager.
Resolution oh six dash one five dash zero two, approval of bed award for street sweeping services. We've put this out for bed. We received one bed and we're recommending to go as often to the city.
Okay, that information was before us in the packet. Is there a motion to pass our resolution oh six fifteen oh two?
Should move.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
We've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, yes, ma'am, Ms. Mac.
Can we get some better clarity with this paint section and the green section? That's so dark you can barely read it.
Gina, here.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I can see it. Those are the streets and how often they sweep on.
Right, that's, that was going to be my question. What streets are going to be swept and at what intervals? And that's so, the colors are so dark.
I think there's a map attached, isn't there?
No, um, fifth section, East College Avenue parking lot near two Men's Crystal Road. The second point is East College Avenue parking lot behind Salvation Army. Third point is West College Avenue parking lot.
I think you can make that.
Okay, I don't know. Two street parking lot, four street parking lots. The pink part would be the parking lots. Uh, the green.
Do you know the green section? Can you read that?
I don't. We can't read it in the packet.
I see North District, South District, Sixth Street, Seventh Street, Marlboro, Poole, East Carolina, West Carolina, East Town and West.
Yeah, the.
That's very imaginable. That's very imaginable.
The yellow ones are three times a week.
I see the yellow one. I'm clear on the yellow. It's just the green and the paint.
The paint is weekly and the green is.
We need a, we need a new, a new copy of that.
We can postpone and add this to the agenda for next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Could we do that, please?
Yes, and survive the night.
Okay, we've had a motion in the second, so we've got to backtrack on that. Who had the motion? Friday, we didn't win the trouble of the motion. Still up for discussion? Yes, sir.
Are they the same? Is this the same policy? Is it the current policy?
We, we discussed this here in the planning committee, if you recall, during the budget process. But this is essentially the same thing we've always done. We've actually added to that more often, added an actual day to the downtown area because we're having so many events on Saturdays that we added, I think it was Friday afternoon. So it's really the same thing that we have been doing in the past. It's the major thoroughfares and parking lots and with the addition of one additional day for the downtown area for the end event, that we do have some events going on on Saturdays.
If that's the case, Ms. Andrews, I stand by my. Okay, I'm gonna wait Mr. Wilson gets back. Mr. Wilson, during the discussion, Ms. Mac asked if we could do this next week so we could see the, the streets a little better because of the highlighting. I asked Mr. Brady to keep with all his motion. And it's pointed out that the street sweeping services that we're voting on is equal to and beyond what we have currently. And so Mr. Brady was sticking by his his motion. So what we're voting on now is to pass our resolution oh six fifteen oh two, the approval toward the bid for street sweeping services.
So, so what he's saying, he was saying the green doesn't matter?
No, we're not saying it doesn't matter. It's, I mean, we read through it. And I think what we decided was Fifth Street from Home to City Limits, Fifth Street from Lawrence to Washington, Fifth Street from Home to Fifth, Seventh Street from Marlboro to Carolina Avenue, Marlboro Avenue from Sixth Street to Seventh Street.
How far around Sixth Street is this thing going? Just that one? Just Montes Avenue?
Um, I came out for that.
Somebody need to say it again.
All right.
That's what I was going to say.
Just at Montes, cut off at Montes, Sixth and Montes?
It's not from.
Is that what this is going to mean?
That's what it said.
Yeah, I mean, everything going from from Fourth Street over to Sixth Street, am I right?
Yeah, but once a month, then it go all the way down Sixth.
Yes.
The fifth.
It goes all the way to Fifth, so the intersection where the.
All the way down Sixth.
Yes.
Because the problem what I have is that at one time when the city had a sweep stripper itself, it always went down Sixth Street. Here recently in years, whatever was being done, it was ran the same way that this is the point out here over to Sixth Street, but never down Sixth Street because I could, I live on, I have to go that way every day. And when I go that way, I, when I used to go to work, every morning, going to work every morning, I would always see this this gentleman that ran that sweep stripper sweeping on Sixth. In the years to pass and, you know, we have not seen this doing on Sixth Street. We've seen the same thing even when the city had it doing. But here downtown, it was downtown in that area. It seems to me sometimes that we get cut off at certain parts of this city. And we need to stop cutting off at certain parts because we have taxpayers down there as well as we have everywhere else. Not to throw off that this is something else, but we could need to consider Hartsville as a whole and not as a part. I have a problem with it because, and the only problem that I have with it is that it doesn't never give me the opportunity to see it come down Sixth Street. You know, and that's the only, that's the only through, fast rule that we have. When you look at it and if it's going to do that, we need, we need to start doing some of that same thing.
And I'm assuming if this were amended, we would have to go back and give a new bid.
Yes, we would.
Additional street.
And it actually, it goes down Sixth Street. You just may not see it because a lot of times the timing of this may not be when you're out and about. But our current contract goes down Sixth Street.
How far?
It goes from Home Avenue all the way to where Sixth and Fifth intersect at that gas station where the city, welcome the city of Hart School sign is.
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah, I've never seen it there before.
But it's usually around five, maybe.
It's very early in the morning, but it is in our contract that it goes down there already currently.
And and again, how often was this?
I don't recall. It's just whatever it states in the.
That's, that's what we're requesting. This is not legible to to me. I I don't know because I'm a new council member. And that's why I asked to be able to see it and read it. And if there's a map, have the map available as well because I can't vote on something that I can't see.
She's willing to do that, Ms. Mac, but Bob was willing, wanting to go ahead in the motion. So we're just, I guess.
Rather defer to council than what you guys decided.
This is a council issue. It's not a staff.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter to me. Just if you include it, I'm fine.
It's included. It's included in there.
All the, all the, it's fine with me.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'd like to add that in the, if we draw no back to drink.
That's not something they do, but that's something we can talk with you about and talk with others.
Okay, any, any other discussion on the sweep streaking? If I can say it right, streak sweeping. Okay, during our discussion, all those in favor of the motion to pass ordinance oh six fifteen oh two, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, okay, resolution passed.